Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, August tenth, two thousand twenty-one. We'll have the swearing in of the new council member, Pat May.
Just raise your hands and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Patrick May.
I, Patrick May.
Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Of the city of Hutchinson, Minnesota.
Of the city of Hutchinson, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
You told them, right?
Yeah.
Now comes the fun part.
The speech.
I was talking about the speech.
Speech, yeah.
Hi, Ray.
Welcome, Pat.
Glad to be here.
We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, I don't have any additions or corrections tonight.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Mary, to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Invocation is from Riverside Church. I don't see anybody here. Alrighty, I guess they're not in attendance. We'll just have a moment of silence, please. Next is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition, recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Mayor, we have a couple resolutions underneath there. We have resolution number one five three three nine. Resolution accepting five hundred dollar anonymous donation to the Hutchinson Police Department towards cost of new training records maintenance system. And we have resolution number one five three four one. Resolution accepting five thousand dollar donations from the Hutchinson Rotary Club for the improvements to rotary park.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution one five three three nine and one five three four one.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Tim, you have something for us tonight, I understand.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a couple of staff members that are in need of some special recognition. Neither of which could be present at the awards banquet in person in order to receive these awards. So being on the Board of Directors for the MWA, I was able to go up and get these awards for them and present them now. So, and due to consequences, only one could be present here tonight. Well, not for lack of trying, so.
So you took, you kind of drew the short straw.
I was forced.
Yes, first let me introduce Deb Paulson. She's the laboratory technician and wastewater operator for us at wastewater department. Her job duties, she manages all aspects of the in-house lab sampling, testing, and microanalysis. She manages the contracted lab testing and results, performs data entry, does the EDMR for us, and annual report preparation. Conducts receiving stream monitoring, assists with operations and maintenance. And if that's not enough, she helps with office administration also. So since the day that I walked into the facility in Hutchinson six years ago, Deb's been an invaluable asset to getting me up to speed and to our organization as a whole. She's essentially been our laboratory manager for the past five years. And even though these duties and responsibilities are extremely time-consuming, she always finds time to assist with daily operations, office management, and special projects around the plant. She has an insatiable appetite for gaining new knowledge in all areas of wastewater treatment technologies that doesn't cease at the confines of the laboratory. She has a great rapport with other peers she networks with, professionals at her contract laboratory, and with all levels of staff at the regulating agencies. Deb enjoys taking on challenges and has great problem-solving techniques. Deb takes the time to mentor other staff members, both in the lab and with plant operations. She strives for excellence in all activities and looks to gain efficiencies in all aspects of the job. So MWA is the Minnesota Wastewater Operators Association. We are members of that. It is an organization that helps promote operator training in the state of Minnesota and networking. So I am newly onto the board, and on behalf of the board, I am pleased to present Deb with the Outstanding Operator of the Year 2021 for Laboratory.
Boy, you can't walk away, man.
The second award winner, we had two in Hutchinson, so this is for all throughout the state. So Deb won Laboratory for all of the communities and municipalities in the state. The next one is Mr. John Kent. He is a wastewater maintenance operator. He serves mainly as a facility maintenance mechanic, but also fulfills operational duties on a regular basis. The maintenance operator not only needs to know how the treatment process functions, but also how to repair them as well. He will be serving as the backup for bio-solids field application. All of the operators and water wastewater staff are cross-trained in both operations of water and wastewater due to weekend coverage. John has been the Hutchinson wastewater facilities for three and a half years and has exceeded my expectations with regards to coming up the learning curve with all facets of maintenance and repairs knowledge for the equipment involved in wastewater treatment. He is a self-starter, always takes the initiative with projects, and is self-directed. He strives to perform at the highest level with both maintenance and process operations. He works to mentor junior coworkers even after a short tenure at the facility. John is a great asset to our team and a joy to work with. And John's award is Outstanding Operator of the Year 2021 for Maintenance. Proud of these operators and all my staff, as well as all the public works staff. So I'm glad to have this opportunity to acknowledge them.
Well, congratulations to each and every one of you.
And, and since we're recognizing, I did want to recognize, actually, John Paulson was recognized by the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities at the conference one, two, or week and a half ago when I was, when I attended on behalf of, I think, his work with, I can't remember the acronym.
M-ESR.
M-ESR, yeah.
Yeah, Water Quality.
Yeah, they recognized him with his assistance to the coalition as well, so.
Alright, moving on. Public comment, anybody wants to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and address. Alrighty. Approval of minutes, we have a couple here. Regular meeting minutes of July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. We have the council workshop of July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Special meeting of July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Special meeting of July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. And a special meeting of August second, two thousand twenty-one. Entertain a motion to approve.
So.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Mary, to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is consideration for approval of designing, designating Pat May to the city boards, commissions, and committees. B is consideration for approval of issuing temporary liquor license to Saint Anastasia Catholic Church on September eleventh and twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. C is approval of amending resolution number one five two six one, amending the two thousand twenty-one job classification table. D is approval of resolution number one five three three six, resolution to sell at auction surplus property. E is approval of items for wastewater, water wastewater, SCADA system improvements. There's two resolutions underneath there. There's resolution number one five three three seven, resolution ordering preparation of report and improvements. And resolution number one five three three eight, resolution receiving reports and calling for hearing on improvements. And F is contract, or claims appropriation and contract payments. Anything anybody wants pulled off? Entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve consent as stated in above.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary, to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Well, Mayor, we were going for a record short meeting, but there's a public hearing, so now we have to wait till six o'clock. So you can move on down to, to new business, then there'll probably be updates and reports, so.
Alright, new business then. City budget workshops for four PM on August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. That's capital improvement plan. And September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, for preliminary budget and tax levy.
Mayor, council, these are obviously our next two workshops in regards to the 2022 budget. As noted, the one in August will be on the CIP, and then the one September fourteenth will be our first look at the proposed budget and tax levy before we need the preliminary adoption at the September twenty-eighth council meeting.
Entertain a motion to approve those two workshops.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Pat, to approve those two workshops. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Governance, we have Economic Development Authority Board minutes from July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, and Library Board minutes from June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Tim, do you have anything else for us tonight?
I've got a few minutes.
I guess since you got fifteen minutes. I was just gonna say that for those of you that may be going by the wastewater plant, we are starting our construction and have been for a few weeks on the headworks improvement projects. So you probably see a lot of bulldozing going on and some piles of dirt and stuff. And soon you'll start to see some structure rise out of the hole. So they're starting to frame up some of the, where the headsail grit separation will be and the splitter box walls and stuff will start coming up. So lots of activity for the next year. Other than that, everything's been going pretty good there. Again, also with the skater project, you know, that you've heard. We're gonna move on with that, and we're nearing ninety percent completion on the design. So we should be bringing that forward pretty quickly, so. Thanks a lot.
Alright, thanks, Tim. Chief Girfrisson, do you have anything for us?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Welcome, council member May, former neighbor.
Well, hang on, I didn't know about that.
Just a couple things. First off, just a reminder to all of you. The, our PSAP will be closing its doors at the end of this month. I hesitate to say closing our doors because it would still be open, but the PSAP function of our dispatch center will be going away. So we're consolidating PSAPs with McCloud County on September one. That will happen sometime during the day. We haven't got a firm time yet from, from Lootman, who is the nine-one-one provider. But it will be sometime on September one. So our new office hours going forward from there will be seven AM to eleven PM. We will be staffing our lobby window during those times, Monday through Friday. So we'll see how that goes. Fortunately, we'll have some time to adjust before we get into a new building. So if we, if we see that the need arises that we need to extend weekend hours for our lobby, or if we, maybe we can adjust our hours during the week and to extend on the weekend or something like that, we have that option to do that. So that was one of the reasons why we decided to kind of set that hard date and make the transition before the building was actually built. So we have that adjustment time in there.
So chief, is the, is the lobby area still gonna be open? There's not gonna be somebody staffing?
No, we will actually be locking the front door at eleven PM and unlocking it every morning at seven AM. There will be a call box located on the outside of the building to the left of the doorway. So if somebody shows up in need of public safety, for whatever reason, they just have to push the button, that rings directly over to the McCloud County Dispatch Center. They'll speak with the dispatcher, and they can have an officer dispatched to them just as quickly as they do now. They just won't be speaking to somebody face to face.
So that's available, so you're gonna be doing this from seven AM in the morning till eleven PM in the evening, Monday through Friday, right?
So the lobby will be open from seven AM to eleven PM.
Right.
And then from eleven PM to seven AM, it'll be closed.
What about the weekend?
And the weekend, it will not be open until Monday morning.
Okay, so they're using the phone if they need some assistance.
So, yeah, they will be pushing a button to speak to somebody over at the sheriff's office, who will then dispatch us to the lobby.
So they push a button and it just rings over to?
Yep, yeah. Less than ideal situation, not a whole lot of privacy, as you can imagine. But when we have our new building built, that design will change. And obviously, then they would have that room with the headset and that type of thing, so a lot more privacy. Just, so the public's aware, we've started our announcements on Facebook this week. Just kind of trying to advise the public of the new hours. And normally, we don't respond to comments that come in on our Facebook page. But if we're getting questions, that type of thing, we are responding to those privately. So if anybody would have a question, they could do so that way. Also, the hope is that there will be an article in the Hutchinson Lear a week prior to the consolidation. I haven't interviewed with the leader yet, but that's the intent, to do that next week, so it could publish the following week. So I think that's it for that, unless there's any questions regarding the consolidation.
Tom, we've talked about this. Obviously, most of this has been through budget discussions, you know, initial design of the new police station. But I guess the route that we're going is not unusual for communities like Hutchinson when it comes to this consolidated dispatch center.
That's correct. Actually, we, for an outstate agency, we were unusual in the fact that we had a PSAP for twenty-something years. So the fact that we're consolidating now is something that counties are doing. Multiple counties consolidate into one large PSAP in the metro. So you might have seven different counties all operating out of the same PSAP. So it's not unusual at all. There's technology, we've discussed all this already, but the technologies there that really no longer necessitates having a PSAP in the city this size. So, and I think with our new building, we've addressed some of those other safety concerns about not having somebody at the window twenty-four hours a day. There'll just be a little bit of a transition time that we have to deal with.
Thanks.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to mention, the, oh, now I'm drawing a blank. National Night Out, or Night to Unite, was last week. And from the feedback that we've received, it was a great success. As if we didn't miss a year. So I spent the majority of my evening at the Elks Park. Elks did a great job with root beer floats and that type of thing. It had a pretty large gathering, and I heard that that was the case all around, around the city. So that's good. I think we had twenty-one organized parties that we were aware of. And I think that might be it, unless there's any questions about anything else.
Not unless you want to talk about catalytic converters.
Certainly talk about them. Talk about them till I'm blue in the face. I don't know what that's gonna be.
MIA, MIA. Okay, but who, who, raise your hand if you had one stolen, huh?
Talking about catalytic converters. Certainly not Hutchinson. Only problem, it's a national problem. You know, part of the problem is, is that they're worth a lot of money as scrap. So the other problem is, we have unethical salvage dealers that are providing a market for them. So we have to either catch who's taking them or catch who's buying them. And I think the better way to do it would catch who's buying them, but that's gonna be more of a statewide effort than a Hutchinson effort. I will say, I, we have a couple suspects, but unless you catch them with their hands around the thing or crawling out from under it with it in their hand, it's pretty tough to make the case. So, but we're gonna keep trying.
Somebody must have driven by, because they cut one of mine out, and then they were like three-fourths of the way through the second one, and they left. So I don't know if someone drove by and they stopped and got spooked, but I wish I'd have drove by sooner, whoever it was.
So there's no truth to the rumor that we, that, that this was set up with council members because the police needed more funding or something.
Absolutely no truth to that. Anything else? Alright, thank you.
Lynn?
I have no update.
Oh, come on up here, come up here.
At the very least, you can touch on the Aquatic Center.
Yeah.
And the dates with that, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have much of an update, but I can give you, yes, an update on the Aquatic Center. Our last operational, normal operational day will be Friday, August twentieth, with normal hours. Anything past that would be bonus hours, which will be communicated through our Facebook page, Hutchinson Aquatic Center on Facebook. Hoping to continue to keep open some hours for the public, such as early morning lap swim, the aquatic time, the river walking, which is a big, a big need and hit in our community. So hopefully, we can continue to operate and hold those times. And then also looking at, depending on staffing and what we have available, offering some weekend hours for operation as well. But those hours would be limited based on staff and what we have available. So you can check the Facebook page for that.
I think one thing that's important for both the council and obviously the public member is that all of our employees are college or high school kids. And so now you've lost your first wave with college. You're losing a second wave with the start of sports and activities. And then school starts thirtieth this year, so.
Yeah, with school starting a little bit earlier, it's been a struggle even to staff this week and next week. A lot of, a lot of our, our staff members, our athletes are going off to college, so their time is limited, what we have left with them. But we're very thankful for what they've provided and been able to be here this summer for us.
Lynn, have you seen, what was the participation in the youth programs? Was it kind of back up to where it was, or was it kind of lacking again, or?
Great question. We actually had a phenomenal year with programs, back to pre-COVID numbers. People really looking to participate back in our youth programs, even our adult programs and across the board, sports and community action, and our adult leagues as well. We really saw an uptake in our numbers again, back to that more normal pre-COVID range, which is great to see. And I will say, the Aquatic Center is having a phenomenal year as well. Our numbers look really well, and the weather has helped with that tremendously. We've only had one day where we've closed, so like a full, full operational day, so.
Great.
That's all.
Thank you.
Oh, come on, you got five more minutes. Still, I can't.
Yeah, you got, you got another one to go with still.
Boy, she sure bailed out on you, Pat. Can't hear up.
Like the Aquatic Center mosquito control season's coming to a close here. So we did do our final prescribed contracted application last week. We aren't going to apply this week. Each application here on out is beyond our contracted obligation. So we're gonna take a look at counts next week, talk into Mr. Olson, and make a decision, you know, obviously with the county fair next week going into that. If counts are up early next week, we'll do the application next week. And that'll probably bring it to a close unless something really changes weather-wise out there.
Yeah.
Project-wise, yeah, Tim mentioned the projects on the wastewater front, and those are going well. Pavement management program down by the rec center. I know council members have caught wind of some of the driveway construction issues we've had with the concrete company down there. And it's, yeah, it's a sign of our time and the struggles, like a lot of industries, with the quality of the workers, the staff, you know, the people, they can get on their crews. And that was reflective in some of the work. Got the B crew for a day or two, and some of those driveways were replaced three times out there. So, yeah, it was, it was bad news. It was a bit contentious between city staff at times and the general contractor, and ultimately, the concrete subcontractor, but it did all get addressed in the end. Highway seven, Montana crossing, yeah, that's going well. I think the holes are scheduled to go up on Monday. And then last week, I saw one fifteen Airport Road, Jefferson. The county is kicking out their steering, project steering committee. And that's going to start next, next week, I believe. And it's gonna be a little more formalized how they're gonna approach this project. We, you know, we're well into the preliminary design, but what's gonna happen now is there'll be more public outreach and engagement of property owners. This isn't gonna be an easy project to build. You know, the size of the roundabouts that are being constructed today, primarily to appease the agricultural community. And it is what it is, and it's a lot of the same conversations that were, that took place before and after the construction of the Highway fifteen south roundabout on Airport Road down by Menards. And if you've been reading the Glencoe newspaper or heard about what's going on over there in the morning. Yeah, it's become very controversial, and, you know, I'll, I'll save my comments on that myself with respect to engineering judgment and such. But, yeah, there's gonna be a lot of paramount rework to the tune of almost two hundred thousand dollars that the county board has approved, which, yeah, we'll leave it at that, whether that's right or wrong. But, yeah, there'll be a lot of those same conversations that play out with respect to this, this roundabout as we, as the city's at the table throughout the final design. That's it.
When is that a projected start?
The county's hoping to get the final design done towards the end of the year here so that they can go after certain pots of money, highway safety dollars and, and the grant dollars and such, to hopefully build it in two thousand twenty-three. But that all depends on funding, of course. If they don't get the, you know, grants or, you know, highway safety improvement dollars to offset the total cost. And this is part of a project, which is a And this is part of a project, which is a concrete resurfacing project. All the way from, you know, west of the fairgrounds out to School Road, counting seven on the west end, you know, through the curve. You know, then tying into the new Highway fifteen roundabout by Menards and then continuing all the way to Adams. So it's a, it's a sizable project. The roundabout is just one aspect of it.
Kent, an update on the first avenue?
First up here? Yeah, uh, first and Jefferson is going well. Uh, we're out there today. There's some concrete rework that needs to be done out there. Kind of the same story, uh, not to the same degree. Uh, that gets done, hopefully they can get the paving contractor back in there in a couple of weeks. Um, they're pretty, pretty backed up and so, but there's a fair amount of work that needs to happen between now and then as far as boulevards and you know, getting the, the topsoil in, getting things vegetated and, uh, the city's actually gonna be doing the tree planting. So we'll coordinate that with the contractor. So, probably looking at blacktop, uh, all towards the end of the month here.
But, uh, I was just talking to John before he left, but, um, but asked him about striping on Echo Drive, but he said that, uh, they can't get striping paint?
Yeah.
What else is, is kind of limited out there?
Oh, it's, it's a lot of type, anything plastic, you know, PVC pipe, you know, nature, um, yeah, ductile iron, water pipe, uh, yeah, castings, concrete manhole structures, you know, those weren't as bad as they were last year in that industry, concrete pipe to some degree. It, it's a, you know, it's a crapshoot, you know, what, what suppliers and what industries are lacking at any point in time. So, yeah. I can only imagine what's gonna play out and that's probably been forewarned by Contagion D several times, what's gonna play out at the, at the PD potentially.
Yeah.
Alrighty, well, let's, uh, jump back up to the public hearing.
Yep, Mayor Council, we have, um, this is per our ordinance, we have a, a new owner um, at the Speedway, which is gonna be located at six forty highway, or the one that's located at six forty Highway seven east. Um, and so with the new ownership, um, they're in need of a new liquor license. And so with, uh, our ordinance requirement requires in a, a public hearing anytime we issue a, a new liquor license. And so that's really the purpose for, um, this hearing tonight. Um, licenses have been reviewed by staff, no concerns or issues. And I guess we'd ask for you to consider, um, approving that, uh, new license. Um, obviously, but before we get into that, you need to open it up for public comment and then close it and then take action. It's like we have a lot of, uh, the public hearing side of me, so.
Open it up for public comment? Entertainer motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Mary to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, Gary? Entertainer motion to approve the license?
Motion to approve the license?
Sorry, it's both, it's both liquor and tobacco too, just to clarify.
Liquor and tobacco? Alright. Well, everybody kind of said it. Matt, you gonna make the motion?
Motion to approve the
Alright.
three, two, one cigarette license for.
And Mary? Motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve the license. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Gary? Mister Sabora, do you have anything for us tonight?
Just one thing. I look forward to working with Councilmember May and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Looking forward to.
Alrighty, Mary?
Ooh, well, I have two things, but they're really hard or two things that I think we need to know about. Number one is the utilities, Hutchinson Utilities was at the neighbors today putting in a new gas line. And I just wanna give a shout out to the crew that was there and the great work they do. I mean, honestly, they're courteous, they clean up their mess. I mean, I was so impressed. So I thanked them, but I'd like to publicly thank them. Also, if you drive down Main Street and you head south, check out those new flags that are flying on the cemetery. Cause they look awesome. So that's it.
Thanks, Mary.
Oh, and welcome aboard, Mister May.
Dave?
Well, I'll say to Mister May, welcome aboard.
That is good.
And other than that, why I don't have anything that I've been approached on and or saw or found.
Alright, thanks, Dave.
Okay, actually, this is new, but Kent, when you mentioned the driveway three times. So I had a forty-fifth year class reunion Saturday and I had two classmates. One of them was talking, it must have been his driveway, cause he told me. And a third classmate came over and kind of rescued me. He goes, hey, wait a minute, he's not even on there yet. One was talking to me about the third time his driveway and the other one, some other issue. So I guess welcome to the council.
Like I said, after a while, scar tissue. Anything else, Pat?
No, just glad to be here and hope I can add to it like you people have.
Thank you.
Matt? Well, like I said, it was a good, uh, good way to ease Pat into being a council member. So I told him, we're gonna get used to it. So, uh, welcome Pat. Um, I'll, I'll be sending, I've already sent you a bunch of documents. You'll be getting a lot more. So you'll have no problem falling asleep at night. So, um, today was the end of filing and we had two people file for the vacant council seat, uh, Mister May, thank, thankfully, cause that would have been real awkward if, uh, if not. And then, um, Carol Johnson. So we've only had two fi- or two people that filed for the vacant council seat, which means that there'll be no primary. And so they'll be, we'll, we'll go right to the general election in February. Um, and so, um, so I mean, in one sense, it's, uh, you know, there's not two elections we have to go through, it'll just be one. And then I think there's actually still two days left in case anybody wanted to withdraw. But, um, as of five o'clock today, when filing closed, there was two that filed for office.
Is that why Melissa was smiling?
Well, I think she's thinking. One less election to have to run through.
Yeah.
Um, and then just a, a quick update on, on the police department, we're, we're in a little bit of a delay because, um, as we were getting ready for final approvals, um, we have to raise the, the area where the new police station is going, needs to be raised up, I think, uh, another four inches or something because of the, the flood plain, which, you know, are it, it was built a foot and a half above it, but of just some of their conditions with the Crow River. Um, there's a requirement to lift that another four inches. And so we're, we're basically updating the plans to account for that. And so we're just kind of waiting for that to, um, I think for those plans that come in, which should be here at any day, um, and then, um.
I gotta believe that's gonna be a little bit more expensive than lifting your car.
Yeah, well, luckily we haven't started construction. So it's something that, I mean, I think some, some of it will probably be the piping and then there'll be some um, landscaping and probably some grading issues, but, um, luckily we caught it
Before.
now. I mean, that's part of the reason you go through some of these pre approvals before you start. Luckily, it was caught now before, you know, we start having, putting a building up and, and looking to do that. So that's just created a small delay, um, and Kent's right, where, I mean, they built into the schedule the idea of when they're gonna be able to get material, but I have a feeling we'll be running into material issues for probably the whole of that project. So, otherwise, that's it for my, like it was, unless you have any questions for me.
Alright, thanks, Matt. Um, just got a couple of things. Uh, uh, the Arts Commission, um, we had somebody that went off and, um, they kind of, the Arts Commission got together and they sent a recommendation to me, uh, Jerry Joe Redmond. So if that's alright with the rest of the council, we'll put her on for next meeting to add her to the Arts Commission.
It's tomorrow.
Yeah.
Our next one?
Well, they'll, I'm sure she'll be there, but, um, the other thing is that, um, I was brought, it was brought to my attention by Mary that, uh, she's, and I kind of agree that, uh, you know, we give the Arts Commission money and we give the Center for the Arts money. I was just wondering if it'd be alright just for a discussion. I know Chad's not here, but I'd rather wait till he, the full council's here.
And it's not on the agenda, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, it's not on the agenda. I just wanted to throw it out there for, you know, to maybe give the Storycatch some money. Cause, uh, they have a lot of projects that they do in, in the city and most of it's all but done by fundraising or donations. So, I think that we could maybe throw a little bit of money towards them.
So are we looking to make that a, a budget item then?
Yeah, obviously we don't have it in the budget for this year. And so I think, you know, in the conversation the mayor and I had, it'd be something you look to add to the budget for twenty twenty-two. Um, you know, the, the early research I've done is that it, that is an allowable expense. Um, the funding of, actually state statute even has a percentage that you can fund up to. I think similar to the Arts maybe might have a, there's a couple different where, you know, there's, there's a certain percentage of your total value that you can spend, that you can spend on historical items in nature. And so, um, I think, you know, my conversation with the mayor, I think he just kind of wanted to throw that idea out there. Um, and that's something we can obviously have during budget discussions and, uh, I'll have more information for the council when we get into it, but it is an allowable expense similar to what it is for us when it comes to public arts. We are allowed to, you know, expend money towards, towards that. And so if it's a, a yearly allocation or however you wanna do it, uh, there are, um, possibilities for doing that.
So otherwise, um, Pat, welcome. You would have never thought you would have had to do that. Well, well, welcome. And, uh, I think we have a lot of, a lot of celebrations coming up. Uh, the fair is gonna happen here pretty quick and and any else?
Relay for Life is this Saturday?
Is this Saturday? I heard they were looking for, uh, golf cart drivers too. Do you know?
I haven't heard that.
So Relay for Life is down at the River Park, right? Yeah. And anything else with the fair?
We're in noon till eleven PM.
Okay.
Music in the park on Monday nights.
Yep. Alrighty, um, unless anybody has anything else, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.